And welcome to the Monmouth City Council Meeting for Tuesday, June the 5th. And on the consent calendar tonight, we've got minutes from the council meeting from May the 1st and minutes from the council work session of May the 1st.
Take a motion to adjourn.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say if I may say aye.
Aye.
Anyone want to post? Alright. Were there corrections? Not typically, you would have said. Thanks. At this time, we come to reports. I have been so busy with work that I have not done a whole lot of mayor-ing outside of the council meetings this last month, so I have no report. So we'll move on to council representatives, boards and commissions. So councillor Silvernagle.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I missed the senior advisory board meeting, so I do not have anything to report there. Their next meeting is actually scheduled for... Actually, I don't have a date, I guess. Sorry. So no report there. And, but the Arts and Cultural Commission did meet on May 14th, and we reviewed and resulted, you know, identified amounts for each of the grants. There were proposals that came through. And we also held back some money for an art purchase, student art purchase at Western. So all of those have been done. I'm not sure when we'll receive the artwork, but we did pick out a piece that was identified there as well. So we spent a full $2,000 that was in the budget or within just a few dollars of that income. I'm assuming Nan announced that the next commission meeting. That concludes my report.
Right, thanks. Councillor Johnson?
Yes, we had, May the 2nd was our historical meeting. This was, this last month was our historical month. Tremendous output by the commission that we had with the breakfast on, I think it was on the 6th, oh yes, yeah, 6th. And we had to show the walking tour. We had the display at the library, which I thought was good. Also, we had the banner was up almost the whole month. So we really pushed it. And then on top of that, I think it was the 23rd that they had the open house at, at the breakfast, and I heard there was about 25 people that showed up for that, but wasn't there. And there was four or five people that are interested in trying to get their homes on the historical registration. They don't know, know a couple of businesses and homes. There's a, there's a big process. And so this was an open house to get people to understand what it takes to get there. So this was very important. Just wanted to bring a letter for the historic commission. The planning commission, I wasn't there on the last one. I think it was like the 13th, I can't remember what it was. Anyhow, what it was, was that was an open house, so that the public could come and put input into how they wanted things done in the city, basically as far as planning, how much more new homes, how much businesses. And I guess it was a huge big turnout in that. So been a special month for, and made for us on those two departments.
Okay, thanks. And councillor Sherman?
I'm sorry that the tree board didn't have a quorum, we weren't officially meeting.
Alright. Councillor Bellows?
So the library board met. The reports were the Friends Spring Book Sale was very successful. They earned $702.21 in sales, signed up four new members, sold five tote bags. Summer Reading Club begins June 12th, so that's right around the corner. The library is also adding a Tuesday evening family programming. So it's, it's hoped that that will help families of working parents who don't get to participate in the summer programs. And there will be some bilingual programs offered as well. The library received a $600 Parks and Rec grant, and they'll be using that for a family community picnic that will take place on Tuesday, August 14th at 6:00 PM. Picnic to celebrate the end of summer reading and to celebrate the library and celebrate the community. And Ms. Oberst and Ms. Casparak, the youth services librarian, they met with representatives at Central School to discuss partnership opportunities tied to the district's 21st Century Grant that they're applying for. And so from this meeting, the library is now able to utilize the district's translation services to translate children's program flyers into Spanish.
Thanks. Are there any community announcements?
One thing about the Parks and Recreation Board, they will be having a joint meeting, their annual joint meeting with the tree board on the 13th of this month. It's a potluck at Madrona Park. Begins at 6:30. And I believe it's a public open meeting, so if you have a really good apple pie or some good baked beans that you want to bring, come on down and join us in here with what's going on in Parks and Recreation and the tree board.
Alright, thanks. Any other community announcements?
I still have entry forms for the grand 4th of July parade, the Rotary Parade. So there'll be, early bird registration is $20 until about the 26th of this month, and then it goes up to $25, $26. So let me know if you'd like to enter a float in the parade.
Alright, thanks. Maybe just a reminder, the grad- graduation's on the 16th. Town will be busy for sure that day.
And that's Western Oregon University's graduation. Central High School's graduation is on the 8th.
8th, right.
Yes. A lot of kids making progress. Scott?
Yeah, thank you. First item, we, we applied for a housing grant, and it's, it's a program through the state where it's called a Housing Needs Analysis. Similar work that we're doing right now, but this might give us a little bit of a boost. We put the grant in, the priority cities are actually bigger than 10,000, that they have a certain percentage of rent burden population, so you figure out what the income is compared to the rent in the area. So we probably are lower down the chain, but we thought we'd go ahead and apply for it anyhow, so we'll see where we come in in that. Development, lots of activity. And it's, it's pretty amazing what's going on. So we've got two industrial buildings being built back behind them on the storage facility. Kind of tucked in by Brookdale, the storage facility back in there, we got slabbed down on one of those buildings. Valley Nutrition moved out the little building right by the park, but we got another unit going in there, so it's going to be, I think Office Use is actually moving right in behind that. We actually have some activity in the Monmouth Hardware Building, the former Monmouth Hardware Building. We don't know exactly what's going on there, but we've had some work crews in there. S-Curves, we've had some productive talks with the developer on that. Some things might come before the council in the near future. And then we got indications that surely the Carl's Jr.'s going to submit their final plans. So a lot of things going on there. Highway 99, doing well on that project. Everything's going pretty smoothly. We've got good feedback from customers, you know, with the disruptions. We're going to, you know, night work right now. Probably both of our teams will be out probably within two weeks. And at that point, after the 4th of July, ODOT moves in, they've indicated they're going to start kind of closer to Hoffman, to kind of work their way back through town, then they'll get in and they'll start doing all their tearing up. So we'll continue our tear-up team for a while. And then last one, we got a, our university connections committee's leading up an effort to do a new holiday function. And there's two parts to it. One is trying to boost kind of in the town side of when the holiday parade goes into the tree lighting. And then the second one's actually a separate standalone event that would occur the week after, or the weekend after Thanksgiving. And then we're talking about, you know, potentially bands, vendors, some other activities. Another interesting one is, we're developing a grant right now to buy a whole bunch of lights. You remember the lights we have in the park that have the animated figures? Buy like another about 10 or 15 of those and basically blanket the park. And then say, wow, you need to come down and look at all the lights and make a nice light display out of it. So we're going to apply for a grant there, so we'll see everything goes. Got a lot of energy with the committee, and we'll see what they come up with.
And that's it?
Yep.
Alright, thanks. And this?
Can you ask, would they please kind of work on sweeping that street up when we get through at night? You can't ride a bike through there. I had to get off and walk it.
Highway 99?
Yeah, Highway 99.
Yeah.
I mean, I had to walk for three blocks because there's so many rocks, they didn't clean them up. And they're flicking, I saw them hitting cars and everything else. You might, somebody might have let them.
Okay, yeah, I can pass it on, sure.
Thank you.
Alright, at this time, we'll, is set aside for citizen comments. This time is reserved for citizens to comment on items that are not on the agenda. Maximum of three minutes per item, please. Is there anyone who, if you wish to comment on a specific item, please sign the sheet provided. I don't know if there's another one. I have the sheet here for the items.
No, that's the citizen comment sheet on the table, right here.
Right.
Yeah.
But that's for name and address?
For citizen comments. Those are for agenda items.
Okay.
I have some handouts for the council.
So if you can state your name and where you're from?
Sure. I'm Kay Jones, and I'm in Monmouth.
Okay.
I've got 10, I've got 10. I'll try to talk quickly. We've lived in Monmouth since the fall of 2006. We bought a home in the area off Townbridge, where there's a mix of seniors and young families. In early May, our next door neighbor decided to put a basketball hoop on the street, just a couple of feet from our driveway. It made it hard for us to get out of our own driveway when they were playing. It made me nervous that their two boys, both under eight, could be hurt. We don't live on a cul-de-sac, it's not a dead end, so. On May 7th, I called Suzanne Dufner with the city to ask if hoops on streets were legal, because I'd never had to deal with this issue before. She said they cannot be on the streets or sidewalks because they are considered an obstruction. But she didn't know the specific ordinance, and she referred me to Code Enforcement Officer Chris Wetch of the Monmouth PD, who told me any obstruction on the sidewalk violates code, and they cannot put a hoop on the street. He quoted city ordinance 8.05080 and 090, and suggested how I could text my neighbor, that's my neighbor's preferred mode of communication, in a kind tactical way. So I followed his advice, but my neighbor never replied, and that evening, he and the other men on our block had a big basketball game in front of our house. So I feel kind of bad about that. Bad feelings. Officer Wetch told me the next day that he had spoken with his supervisors, who were figuring out how to proceed, he said, and that the ordinance says he'd given me were only for debris. But I found that later, he was right the first time, the ordinance includes any obstruction. A few minutes later, Sergeant Olafson called me, saying he could not help me and referred me to the city council. So here I am. Both Suzanne and Officer Wetch said there were already ordinances in place, so there seems to be a disconnect between the city and the police. I canvassed the entire town of Monmouth, and I found a total of 48 houses with hoops on the streets or sidewalks. In a city of 10,000, even if we lower it to 7,000 actual households, I really don't know how many houses there are, that comes out to .685 percent, or more than half of one percent of people with this issue. But when people see these hoops on the streets and sidewalks, they think they can do the same thing, and that's why there are clusters of them. If you notice on the list that I have, the photos, there's a list of all the ones in Monmouth. There, you know, three on this street and three on that street. They think, oh, they're doing it, why can't we do that? And that's why there's so many in my particular neighborhood, too. Even the manufacturers acknowledge that the portable basketball hoop should not be on streets or sidewalks. So how are other areas having this? The language most used all over the country, including Monmouth, is the word obstruction. I also gave you some online comments about a woman who did put a portable hoop on her street, and the comments show the public's true feelings. If you did a survey that was anonymous, the majority of people would say hoops in the public right of way are unsane, nuisance, as well as an eyesore. So this is, this was interesting to me. Last Friday, I called DOJ in Washington DC, and the rep told me that if streets and sidewalks are not kept free of obstructions, anyone can file a complaint with them against the city. And anyone can also personally sue the city and the property owners under the ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act. So I was, really? You can read the specific regulation she gave me? I put those in my handouts. It seems weird that as a nation, we have these great sidewalks now designed for everyone to use, but we think it's okay to put up a $200 toy. And if you're in a walker, I thought, I can't even ask my parents to come visit us, because my dad is 88, he uses a walker. My mom is 83, she just had a newbie put in. And we could not even go a block and a half anywhere from our house, but go further than a block and a half without running into a hoop on a sidewalk, so it's, it's a problem. Now, thank you for your time.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Scott, you'll, you'll follow up with some information for her and us on what we're going on then?
Yeah, I feel like it's probably simple, it's just do a work session. It's a, this is an issue that most any city wrestles with.
Okay.
But yeah, we could put that into a work session, have a broader discussion.
Now, I'm just already there, that's the frustrating part. So you don't have to change it, but.
Alright, thank you. We appreciate you bringing it to our attention. Anyone else for citizen comments? Alright, then we'll move on to our business agenda. And item number one is the adoption of a resolution approving the budget transfer for 2017-18.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. So this is the first of several documents that I'll be discussing with you this evening. This deals with fiscal 1718, the year that we're currently in. And as I have been forecasting in our quarterly reports, most recently the third quarter report that I brought to you, a number of our budgets, we did not forecast as well as, as they turned out as far as spending in different categories. This is not a major issue. We have had, in most cases, revenues that will more than offset them, or we have other expenditure categories that can be used. And in all cases, they were unforeseen situations. So I did prepare a memo that outlines what each of the situations were again for you. And in the general fund, we saw that the library had two HVAC situations, and one of those, we did get insurance for, so that we're going to do a supplemental budget on. The other one, it will have to come out of contingencies. As City Manager McClure brought through of the roof, that one, we will only need to appropriate $20,000 in contingencies because we have savings elsewhere in, in the management and finance portion of the budget. In the water fund, we have two areas also. One area where we will do a transfer from contingencies related to the Highway 99 project that we knew was, was a best guess when we put it together, and it has, as was possible, gone over that. And so we do have contingencies for just that purpose. The other piece was, we ended up doing more meter installations than we anticipated, which used more personnel costs than we had in the category in that one. We will do a supplemental budget for, based on the extra revenues that we earned in the water fund, beyond what we had forecast. Street fund, again, we had with, with leaf pickup and some other activities that those street, the personnel in the street fund were assigned, that ended up going over the personnel services category. But we do have actually some capacity in materials and services as well, but just to keep it clean, I've used contingencies. But again, it's not, it's not a serious overage in the budget. It is around $25,000 in that budget. The gas fund is, because of rising gas price costs, we're seeing that it is likely to go over by about $5,000. And so I've just put in that as a placeholder that I, I think will be adequate to cover. And of course, we've got incremental revenues because gas prices also, we've been able to make more on that side for the revenue. Building fund, again, you're aware that we have had some higher costs, both in our staffing and in our temporary staffing on the materials and services side. And so we've used a part of it, we are going to cover by contingencies, and, and again, we're going to use some of our supplemental revenue to cover the other amount that's over. The sewer and water SDC items are actually for reimbursements, and this happens from time to time. It's very difficult to budget for how much you might end up having to do in a reimbursement of an SDC fund. And what that means is the project didn't go forward, so therefore, these are dollars that had to be reimbursed and came out of our materials and services. And so again, using contingencies is one option for that, but we use capital outlays since the capital outlay didn't occur. Or what's, that's what we're proposing, I should say. And I've touched on all of the supplemental budgets, except for my net fund. And the only other supplemental budget that I'm proposing is in the my net fund for the issuance costs on our debt service, on our advanced refunding. Those were completely covered by the proceeds that we got from the bonds, but because it's in a category that we don't typically use in this fund, we don't have that category appropriated for, so it's the perfect candidate as well for an unforeseen supplemental budget. So those are all of the categories. I have two resolutions before you. One for the supplemental budget portion that addresses the ORS, the ORS rules, and that's Oregon Revised Statute rules, around ensuring that it is either under 10% or is a qualifying event, if you will, which the my net funds qualify for because they're debt. The other three, there was additional resources available, so those can be supplementally budgeted. And the second one is the transfer resolution that you're used to seeing every year at this time of year, just to deal with those small dollars that are a little over the category. And with that, I would answer any questions.
On the street fund, was that all labor? $25,000 was all labor?
So it just means that it was allocated differently. So we have the same number of staff, but we allocate them across the funds. And at the beginning of the year, we budget the projects that we think we will do in each fund. And that's why, at a category level, we ended up allocating differently based on the projects that ended up happening in the street fund. And to that end, I wanted to point out that this year, in the adopted resolution, I have put together, gotten rid of, if you will, category adoption in the enterprise funds. That is something we don't have to do. We're going to propose to do it at the departmental level instead. That way, when there are things such as, you know, we have vacancies, so we hire a temporary, that's in materials and services. If we, if we are budgeting in personnel services, it's very hard to do, to allocate those funds to materials and services if you've appropriated at that level. So you end up doing these transfers. I anticipate next year, we will have far fewer transfers than we've had this year, or other years.
Thank you. Any other questions? So the first resolution, the one, a resolution to authorize supplemental budget for various funds and increased resources and unforeseen costs, this would be resolution number 1860.
I have a transfer to 1860. Where do you have 1860 from? When's that first?
First one.
1860.
Probably put it in your second one.
Okay, now let's, so that, that resolution is 1861?
Or number one, yeah?
The resolution to authorize supplemental budget and various funds with increased resources and unforeseen costs is resolution 1861.
The second one, right?
In the staff memo, it's listed second, but I think in your packets, it came in first. We just didn't get them organized. We probably started off.
Alright, I move adoption of resolution 1861, a resolution for supplemental budgets in the listed funds, based on higher than anticipated resources sufficient to cover unexpectedly higher expenditures.
That's it. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please, fellas.
Councillor Bellows?
Aye.
Councillor Silvernagle?
Aye.
Councillor Johnson?
Aye.
Councillor Sherman?
Yes.
Alright, and now we'll move on to a resolution approving transfers for the budget year 2017-18, and directing the finance director to make appropriate entries. That would be resolution 1860.
I move adoption of resolution 1860, a resolution approving appropriate transfers for fiscal year 1718, and directing the finance director to make appropriate entries to record the appropriations transfers in the fiscal year 1718 city budget documents and financial system.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Just for the purpose of the, of the camera, it's appropriation transfers, not appropriate.
Okay, I stand clear.
And so with that, roll call, please, fellas.
Councillor Johnson?
Aye.
Councillor Silvernagle?
Aye.
Councillor Bellows?
Aye.
Councillor Sherman?
Yes.
We'll move on to the next item, which is a resolution on the use of state revenue sharing.
We need to hold a public hearing, sir, in order to, before we can address the use of the revenue.
Oh, okay. Alright, so I, I'll open the public hearing. You need to make any statement before we?
We welcome comments from the public on the use of revenue sharing as outlined in the packet.
Seeing none. Close the hearing. And we'll move on to item three, resolution on the use of state revenue sharing.
So ORS, Oregon Revised Statutes, has an interesting clause in it that requires us to officially, as the, as the city government must elect to receive state monies, such as cigarette tax, liquor taxes, that are through the revenue sharing program. And, and those represent a fairly significant portion of both our general fund and our street fund budgets. So staff recommends that we agree to accept them. There are other options, such as not accepting them or using them to defray, causing the lower property tax assessment. But those also would impact our, our balanced budget. And so we would recommend that we go ahead, as we have every year since, in September, and as many other jurisdictions do, elect to accept the revenue sharing.
And again, this is a resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenues. This would be resolution 1862.
I move approval of resolution 1862, a resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenues.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please, fellas.
Councillor Johnson?
Aye.
Councillor Bellows?
Aye.
Councillor Sherman?
Yes.
Councillor Silvernagle?
Aye.
Alright, and that passes. Now declare a public hearing open for budget 2018-2019. I have two people who've signed up to speak on this, first being Nan Moles.
Thank you, Mayor and council, in advance, for your consideration tonight. As a budget committee member this year, I'm not happy with my decision to recommend approval to the city council. Reasons for this are embedded in lessons learned on the budget committee. The process is set up to discourage thoughtful deliberation. We spent most of three meetings just listening to presentations, and then we were slammed in the third meeting to make decisions. Immediately after the last department presentation, a motion was made to recommend budget approval. This meant that the group was rushed to make a decision. Then after the decision was made to recommend approval, the group was so stretched and ready to be done, that capital improvement projects were approved without any discussion. I personally didn't have the heart, after 10:00 PM at night, to ask everyone to weigh in on the fact that the SIP was up almost 13%, or $835,000 next year. Last year during the budget hearing, I was told I should have been part of the process. It was a long process, so no changes were possible that night. This decks the question, why do you hold a public hearing? You don't have to approve at the same meeting that you hold the hearing. This year, as a participant, I still had no influence, because we were directed not to discuss line item changes, just big ideas or general goals. Yet when this happened, such as with the COLA discussion, we were told that this is a policy issue for the council only. So what can the budget committee really do to slow down the train? The answer lies not with the budget committee, or with the lack of citizen input. The answer lies in leadership. City council members, a close look at the SIP City council members, a close look at the SIP even now could slow the train down. How much of it is aligned with city goals, current realities, and pressing needs like city hall? Why are you dedicating dollars to another police car, an impound shed, and a police, a police parking structure with only $15,000 set aside for city hall and a looming $3.5 million cost? This is, in my opinion, unconscionable. Further, during the year when asked to pay for one more thing, you can make staff accountable to point where in the budget the item was planned for or why it constitutes an emergency that can't wait. Council and city manager and department heads, you're in charge of line item amounts. How much is in your budgets that doesn't contribute to current goals, realities, pressing needs, or even current services? Why have you ignored our city hall and repairs for over 10 years? Why have streets gone unnoticed 10 years? These could have been addressed in regular, ongoing CIP budgets. Mayor, it's up to you to create a vision for how to narrow the gap and to create a thriving community. Yes, independence has a vastly different tax base, but don't confuse inputs with outputs. No matter what the source of income, why does independence with $6 million less look and feel as though it's thriving? Monmouth may have its storefronts full, but there is a noticeably different vibe. Independence also has college residents, purse costs, and wells to fix. They spend fewer dollars with a larger vision for their city. Monmouth can do this, too, with leadership that creates its future. As a citizen, I'm going to call you on the following excuses. One, we can only increase revenues or cut services. Two, our hands are tied. Three, what do you want me to stop doing? Four, we've always done it this way. These statements merely identify you as uncreative and one who advocates on critical thinking skills. What is the purpose of tonight's hearing if once again, there is no intention to consider changes? Are you driving the train or riding the train with so much business as usual? Thank you, and I'll leave you with two cents recommendations for how to improve the budget process next year, along with benefits of leadership for our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next person who'd like to speak is Chuck Thurman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Chuck Thurman, power and light manager. First thing I would like to do is thank you for excusing me from part of the budget committee meetings due to my injury. I have found, though, that this is a wonderful pen holder, gets my glasses in here, I can hold a drink onto this side, so there are some good parts to being tied up in a sling. One thing I want to do with regards to the budget committee is publicly thank Janet Chinard for carrying the lion's share of the work from our side. You did a remarkable job. I would like to thank the budget committee for bringing the budget forward to you, as they have proposed it. I'm very grateful for the work that they have all done. That's a big undertaking. Having missed some of the meeting, there was discussion that was held that I would like to address tonight, and I'm referring back to a May 15 handout that was given to the budget committee that dealt with the cost of living increase for employees. As I was reading that, it was very easy for me to see a discrepancy that happens between different work groups, whether they're represented or nonrepresented, and how all that fits together. But life isn't always fair, and life isn't always about whether there's a discrepancy or not a discrepancy. It's what can we do and what should we do that's right for the city of Monmouth. As I looked at that, and I look at the council goals, I would like to let the council know that my staff, not unlike the police department or the public works or the library, worked very, very hard for the citizens of Monmouth. They have a lot of pride in the work that they do, and I expect a very high level of professionalism and productivity from my staff. When I heard the results of part of the discussion from the budget committee that the proposed cost of living increase, which is a, a policy that we have using a particular index, was being possibly set aside and possibly going to be re-discussed, I talked that over with my staff, and it really didn't set well from the standpoint that they're working hard, they thought that they would have an index that would help them along, and the services that they go to get are not always available here in Monmouth. You have to travel away to get some of the things done that you'd like to do. We did have a big discussion about things that we can get in Monmouth, but the majority of the folks, probably not unlike you, do travel away to get some of their things. Well, they were okay with the idea of being recognized for their work, and one way that we can recognize is reward them with what they have earned and what they have worked hard for the citizens of Monmouth, and that is a cost of living increase for them. I don't have a lot of different ways to motivate or to reward employees. The current handbook that we have and policies we have don't provide for that. I brought that forward to staff meetings, and we're working on different things that we can do, but I really have a tough time looking my employees in the face, asking them to put out 150, 200%, knowing that there's a potential that we won't even give them the cost of living increase. We had some discrepancies a while back, a couple of years ago, when we did a salary survey to right-size some of the salaries when we made adjustments. Out of that, we had at least five employees, if I remember correctly, had their salaries frozen, and there was no opportunity for increase. That's pretty tough. That's pretty tough for folks to not be able to move anywhere in their level without any increases at all. Some of the others have step increases, and then there's the representative side that has negotiated increases. The non-reps have no, no representatives as far as their negotiation. They didn't ask me to come here, it's just I see the hard work that this council and that I ask of our employees to do, and I would like the council to really think clearly, think hard on what's best for the citizens of Monmouth, what's best for the city, and what's best for our employees. With that, I ask for you to consider carrying the cost of living through as the index that you have selected to use. Bring it right on through. We know we're going to do a change next year because of the nature of that index. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the budget that didn't get their name down here? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the hearing, and we'll move on to adopt a resolution adopting the 2018-19 budget and making appropriations, levying taxes, and adopting the 2018-2023 capital improvement program.
Okay, you have before you a staff report. Everyone was present at the budget committee meetings where there was significant and, and I think very good deliberation on many topics related to the, to the reports that department heads brought to you. I have highlighted here some of the discussion points that were perhaps most controversial as far as what changes there are in the budget. Pretty much as, as Dean Andrew McClure has characterized it, it's, it is a status quo budget. We are trying to maintain services within the, the cost and the framework of available resources, and department heads have done, I think, a tremendous job of that. I appreciate the kudos from, from Chuck, but frankly, I could not have done it without them. These are an incredibly conscientious and expert group of department heads, and their staff is tremendous. I know them all because I write their paychecks. So I would just like to say that, and then emphasize that, as I mentioned, the, the, there is a COLA built into this proposed budget of 3.6%. You have the, the option to, to consider whether that is an appropriate COLA. There will be a separate action for that, though, later in the budget, and that will not necessarily impact if you adopt this budget. You may still vote on that. The other two things, the two rate increases that were mentioned during the budget process for water and for power and light, those are going to come to you at the next council meeting. Again, adopting this budget, we have built those rate increases into this budget, but if you opt to do something different with those rate increases, we will be able to adjust the budget accordingly. And the third item is, as voted on by the budget committee, we have included the position of the apprentice lineman requested by the power and light director, estimated to cost $87,935. That differential was taken from reserve and appropriated, so the budget is still balanced. You may make further modifications, or you may accept it as staff has proposed it and budget committee has recommended it. And I'll welcome any questions.
And so this would be resolution 1863. Any questions?
You do say this does include the $87,000 power line.
It does include that position, correct.
And if we pass this, we could still discuss the COLA and the non, in the non...
Representation staff, correct.
That would be, that would be item six on the...
Correct.
On our agenda. Any further questions? Someone like to make a motion on that?
What's the resolution?
1863.
Okay, I move approval of resolution 1863, a resolution adopting the budget, making appropriations, levying ad valorem taxes, and adopting the capital improvements plan for the 2018-2019 fiscal year.
Second.
That has been moved in seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please, fellas.
Counselor Silvernagle.
Aye.
Counselor Sharmer.
Yes.
Counselor Belz.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
No.
And that resolution passes. All right. And then we move on to...
What was that vote? It was 3-1?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It takes the majority of the council's present.
And item six is adopt a resolution for compensation plan for non-represented employees.
Okay, so this follows the pattern of how we've presented the, the nonrepresented COLA increases for the past over 12 years, as I provided you with a schedule, as Chuck pointed out at the May 15 meeting. I did outline for you the different levels, again, that nonrepresented has received over that time based on the sale in Portland CPI double that is going away, this will be the last year, and council will need to derive a different CPI indicator or some other mechanism to decide on what the COLA policy would be for nonrepresented going forward after this fiscal year. I did point out in the staff memo that there was significant and considerable discussion at the budget committee about possible changes to that CPI level or to what the nonrepresented COLA should be. And again, I really want to emphasize that I was presenting you with facts and data. I'm not necessarily advocating on, certainly not on my behalf, although I concur with Chuck, that there are staff that are, you know, well-deserving of getting a cost of living increase. And with that, I'd take questions.
Hearing none, do I, does someone like to make a motion?
Nobody makes one? I'm going to back up on the discussion, I guess, before I make a motion. Is that fair enough?
Okay.
It means nobody wants to jump out to make a motion, so let's back up a second. I've looked at this, I looked at all your 12-year program. My biggest concern is, just like the charts you had, our wages are going up, our income is not. And as the more percentages we give, the higher the rate will go, the less this is going to make it, because we know we're locked in on some, on some of our values. Oh, 3.55 was in '07, '08, 3.6, nobody and I know about 3.6. And I'm, I'm just saying from the people in this town, we don't live in Portland, I'll say that again, we don't have the taxes of Portland, and I realize that most of people are to top into their boat steps, so this is the only raise to give. My point is, well, be out for it. I think 2.5 is, is it for COLA. That's the way I feel. I'll throw it out there on the table.
And I have a, I have a couple of comments, too. I'd like to point out that people in Monmouth who are living on social security got a 2% cost of living adjustment this year. Most of that was eaten up by an increase in their Medicare premium, and all the rest will be eaten up by the increase in their water bill. And the increase in that water bill goes to pay for salaries, okay. And I would also like to point out that I'd like to recognize our city manager for doing something about fixing the, the gender equity in our positions, in our management positions here. Last year, at this time, seven of the department heads that reported to you were men, and this year, four of the people who report to you are women. So of the eight, I think that's great. We still have, and, and in addition to that, I hear people all over town talking about what a wonderful job our, these new hires are doing. So kudos to you for that. Unfortunately, we still have a long way to go in terms of gender pay equity. Of the city manager, counting the city manager and the eight department heads, of whom five are men and four are women, the ratio there in wages is the women earn 67 cents for every dollar that the men earn. If you want to get fancy about it and throw out the high and the low, that is, the high is the city manager's salary, and the low is the salary for the senior center director. It goes up to 85 cents for women for every dollar that the men earn. If you put the city manager and the senior center director back in and add the city recorder, the ratio drops to 64 cents that women earn for every dollar that the men earn. And if you throw out the high and the low and add the city recorder, the ratio drops all the way down to 62 cents that women earn for every dollar that men earn here in this city. So I think that it's great to say that here in Monmouth, when we flip the switch, our lights turn on; when they pull the handle, our toilets flush. And I think we can also say here in Monmouth, we're willing to make a statement about fixing gender pay equity in this, in this city. What I would like to propose, and I'm not sure we can do this, I know you can give me the legal aspects of this, if we were to give, I know you can't change, you can't give raises, you can't deny raises based on gender, but if we were to give a 3.6% cost of living adjustment for the department heads who are making less than $100,000, and that's three women and one man, the total package in raises would come to $10,337. If we gave a 2% cost of living adjustment for the department heads who are making more than $100,000 a year, that's four men and one woman, the total package in raises would be $11,894. That ratio is 87 cents to every dollar. So the women, or the people making under $100,000, most of whom are women, would be getting a raise of 87 cents for every dollar that the people making over $100,000 will get. If you give a 3.6 cost of living adjustment for all the department heads who are making 100, over $100,000, that dollar amount will come to $21,410, and the ratio will drop all the way to 48 cents for every dollar. And what that means is that if we give all the department heads a 3.6 cost of living adjustment, they will be earning a dollar for every 48 cents in a raise that the women get here in this city. Now, that said, I would like to point out that of those department heads making more than $100,000, the one earning the least is a woman. So we can do something about that, or we can decide to say, well, no, it's never been done before, so we're not going to do that. Here's a copy of my peers.
Mr. Mayor, what I might suggest is if you can get a motion on the resolution, then if there are amendments to propose, because I think you need to get some sort of action in front of the council.
So...
I have a question I wanted to ask.
Okay, do you want to ask?
Well, I was just curious, do we have a thought of where we're headed for the new... Do we have a thought of where we're headed for the new COLA, what we'll use for COLAs going forward, so a different CPI for next year? I know I heard one proposed at the Budget Committee, but I wasn't sure if that was what the recommendation from the city was, or if that was just from one individual, because I think that was somebody from the state originally, retired.
So, we actually have not done a full-scale analysis of it. However, there are ones that the local area CIS is looking at. It's a Western Region CPI W that is probably most comparable to our makeup. That seems like a good candidate, but I think, again, for Council's review, I would like to take a look at, historically, you know, where these indicators have been. I suspect they will come out about the same as my previous study showed for the CPI U and the CPI W that were indicators that were raised at Budget Committee as being better. They do tend to be pretty comparable over time, and that's one of the reasons that, again, yes, this looks anomalous, because it's three-point-six percent this year, but when you factor it in over time, and the fact that there was a point-three percent just three or four years ago, in the end, they all come out fairly close to what you would do. And so stability is pretty much what needs to be recommended. And so, if I do see one that is anomalous, I will probably not want to recommend that. But, no, I don't have one at this time to recommend for a replacement.
Did you by chance look at that particular one you were at? I'm just curious. Is it roughly three-point-six, or is it-
No, it is lower. It is lower, yeah. But, again, it's not in the same timeframe, so it didn't come into being until after-
Right.
We were, based on policy, we were in the last month of when we needed to, when this particular indicator existed, so the next one was for the next twelve-month period. So, it was lower, but not for the same time period, if that makes sense.
Different time period, I see. Okay. But we'll have to-
And just to add a note, the bottom line, anybody will tell you on this, you pick one and you stay with it.
Correct.
That's the simplest one. Pick the one you like, stay with it.
Right. That makes perfect sense to me, and I mean, it's made sense all the way-
They all just, they were horrible, but they all end up roughly the same place over time.
Sure. This one seems to be an anomaly, is where, I guess, we're creating a bit of a little angst, to say the least, I guess, is what I would say.
And it was sort of the November-December timeframe that really pushed it up. And so, because it was the second half of the year, that it did- but, again, that has been what has been used for over twelve years. And the second half of the year, actually only two years ago, in sixteen-seventeen, the second half of the year was anomalously low, relative to the other CPI indicators in the same time period.
Did you have another question, Laura?
Well, I'm supposed to make a motion here, so we can discuss it in that opening. I moved approval of Resolution, and it says eighteen sixty-four, Resolution adopting an increase in the compensation level for non-represented city employees in the amount of three-point-six percent over the compensation level for this same employee group during the year of twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen.
Let me draw here a second.
Second.
For discussion, at least.
Has been moved and seconded. Discussion, well?
Welcome back to another one. We set out the COLA here. We use this as a guide. This is not written in here. And, let's see, we're getting back up here. One year, it was seventy, we made the percentage at, okay, I can't remember. Anyhow, point seventy, point seven percent. So, the city upped it to another percent on that down year. There's no problem, it's just a guide, that we can't go down with it, too. I understand the three-point-six, but I also have to figure in this, and maybe it has nothing to do with tonight, but the bumps, too, are the step raises that everybody gets in this talent, basically, to get in this talent. That's three percent. So, if you've got a, and I'm not saying some people already have the view here in front of me that there's, I'd say thirty-four, and it says there's thirty-two. I think there's thirty-four, and twenty-five are already at the top of the step. So, this is their only pay increase. So, that means that we've been giving good increases anyhow for people that are promoting up through the system. So, if you took the, let's just say, the nine people that you have there, we gotta give them a three-six, and then we turn around and give them a three-point on the step, and that's for the year, that's on their anniversary date, right? That's the anniversary date, that's not July first, that could be November, December. That's a six-point-six increase. So, even on the down years, there's some people were in the step that point-three was sixteen, and they were on the step, most of them still got a three-point-three that year. I'm saying, we gotta stop the curve. I don't care how you look at it, we can't make much more money in this, and we haven't come up with any great ideas. We came to the franchise, that kinda went, and we're at the top of that. We just have to level that off some, because it's gonna hurt the city ten years down the road or five years. We have no other income to speak of to be able to present. That's my complaint. Sorry.
Any other thoughts, Hannah?
Well, I just, I have to agree with Counselor Sharmer. The more you look at pay equity, and again, yes, we are both women, I will admit that. I'm at the top of my salary grade where I work, I've been at the top of my salary grade for seven years. I get a two percent COLA typically, sometimes one-point-five. I was told by my Human Resource Director, you have to be working because of your own work ethic. And I'm not telling people they're not valued, because they are, city staff are valued, but we're talking about making this gap that much larger in terms of gender, and we're talking about raising our rates by ten percent. Something has to give. It's not saying people aren't doing a good job. It's saying something has to give, and if we keep working on this gap, it's going to get greater and greater and greater. And as Counselor Johnson said, we're going to end up with bigger and bigger problems unless we're bringing in money to account for the raises.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Sure.
Two points. The one thing we have to keep coming back to on looking at non-rep compensation is you're not having this discussion about the represented employees.
Correct.
So, you're making a policy decision right here that we will, I will call it out, pick on one of your employee work groups. I wanna point out here, this is your lowest-cost work group. There's no negotiating costs. We do not spend time negotiating, which, and that saves us ten, fifteen thousand dollars every time we negotiate. They actually have a less aggressive step schedule than the other units, so they already have higher increases for their steps. And as we showed historically, the non-reps are the lowest of all the units. So, you're taking the ones that we've already contained costs the best we can, and you're going to that unit to squeeze out raises. I really question that. At a couple levels, the employees are gonna be very frustrated if that goes through. I had one work unit just ask, why aren't they following policy? Staff has to follow policy, why isn't it the Council? At the other end, if it really gets to the point, and this came up in discussions, too, if the Council doesn't seem to be taking care of the non-reps, we might get a third union. It's that direct. If you don't feel like you're taking care of, you form a union. And then we would have another unit that would lock in costs even further. So, I would hopefully take that into consideration when you're going on this. The pay equity issue, totally mixing and matching numbers. Those numbers do not work. You are dealing with employees on different pay ranges. If those are all the same ranges, if they're all, everybody's at the same pay range, they have the same level of experience, yes, there would be a problem. That's not the case. In our case, the women in some of those positions are at lower pay ranges, so if you do the math, of course, the men are making more. The inverse would happen if the women happened to be in the higher pay ranges and the men are in the lower one, then we're making more money than the men right now, I think. So, those numbers are fundamentally not applicable. You can't use them that way. And you also have to consider that if you go that route, you would just blow up our entire compensation system. Council adopted a compensation policy, totally objective, not related to gender, just, here's the pay range, here's your duties. If you start randomly picking, this person gets a raise, this person gets a different raise, we don't have a compensation system anymore.
I don't think that's what I suggested. I think I suggested that the department heads who are making over a hundred thousand dollars a year get a two percent cost of living adjustment. That would be pretty generous. It's like-
Right, and then now you just destroy the pay ranges. We've got the pay ranges set, now you're saying this pay range goes up, but this one suppress?
Well, I don't think there's anything wrong with giving people all the non-represented employees in Monmouth who make under a hundred thousand dollars a three-point-six percent cost of living adjustment. The department heads will still be, yes.
No, no, I didn't mean, I was just waiting for you to finish, I mean-
Yeah, go ahead, finish, and then I need to jump back in.
With a two percent cost of living adjustment, those department heads making over a hundred thousand dollars will still be getting more in the amount that they get in a raise in the total package than the department heads who earn less than a hundred thousand dollars a year, getting a three-point-six percent cost of living adjustment.
I would be pressed to find any agency that applies raises that way.
So, I need to stop this for a second, because we need to get back on what the motion is? And, well, I hear what you're saying, Laurel. This is not the time for the discussion about pay equity.
When is?
Well, that would be probably for a work session, when we need to really figure out, is there truly pay inequity? So, that should be a completely separate item from this. What I wanna say is, having been involved with the city for a lot of years, is that, and in any company, I mean, I don't know how you guys are doing it, but in my work, I haven't seen a raise in three years of any kind. And I work part-time, and I don't have benefits, other than Affordable Care Act. And so, when we have a program that's consistent, we need to stay consistent as a Council. And to, like I said in the Budget Committee meeting, to now arbitrarily say, we think this is too much, when we didn't seem to think that point-oh-three was too little two years ago, and now we become arbitrary in what we're doing, and it's inconsistent for our employees, then we leave the employees on like, what are we doing each year? And what we need to do is, the employees need to know that we, as a Council, are creating a stability for them, rather than an instability for them. And so, I can't vote for this, but I am for keeping the policy of this index staying in place, and not monkeying with this index this year, because it looks high, but two years ago, it was extremely low. And we asked the employees at that time to take that hit then. So, this seems to me to be a balancing of that low hit. And so, I am for staying consistent, and following the index, following our policy, and being consistent for our employees.
Yeah, if I could, and I obviously don't have a position on the resolution. I am a little concerned about addressing the bifurcating the adjustment now on the basis of pay equity. Granted, if you were to make the break, as you did, at a dollar amount, that appears to be gender-neutral, but the rationale has been really expressed in terms of gender-specific, really largely. And I think that before we get into gender-based, or, yeah, gender-based determinations of pay, or in this case, adjustments of pay, I think we want a study to justify that first. I would be reluctant to have the Council approve that today, even on the dollar amounts, because they have been expressed in terms of really identifying men and women. And I think a study can get you there, based on historical evidence, but I wouldn't recommend that you do it on the fly tonight. So, whatever rate you wanna do, I just, I would be hesitant to have you bifurcate the cost of living adjustments in motion tonight. A study in the future, I think, we will very much, you know, very well, uh, married.
On the, on February fifteen, sixteen, there was zero in the United States, basically, on any income advancement that year. Zero on his Social Security, zero on those retirements, except for state personal. So, in this half year, I just think we have to stop this someplace. Now, you were saying, well, we'll change to a different program, or a different policy. I mean, I didn't vote for this, this was a policy decided before I was on the Council. All we've done is use this as a guideline, and we've pretty much done a pretty good job of guideline. I think this year, way higher. And I'm just saying, my point is, and I'll make a motion to this amendment, if you wanna do that, that two-point-five is what the raise should be. They get, they didn't get hurt much, well, I don't think you got hurt at all, on the, on our medical, because we dropped down their deductible, but we raised their VIBA. So, I mean, one offset the other. You can't say that we, I wanna try to say is, we're looking at policies, we're looking at benefits, we're looking at labor. I understand that everybody's looking at a three-six at their top of it, but maybe this is a year we just have to stop. Take a look at it, and reevaluate what we have, because this multiplies in five years down the road. If you go from a two-five now and drop one-point-one percent, that's a tremendous amount in five years, when you're still working on base pay. You can do whatever you want. You know, it's just like six percent, almost. In eleven years, it's a hundred percent. If you raise your taxes six percent every year, in eleven years, it's a hundred percent. Well, jeez, this is the same principle, I'm trying to say is, we've gotta get that, we don't wanna lay people off. Soon, we're gonna get up there, but we don't have the money to pay everybody. So, what do we do? We cut the low people and start, you know, laying people off. We can say what you want, but that's, we don't have so much money, and we're owning that budget fund. I'll make a motion right now, that we put the COLA at two-point-five.
That'd be a motion to amend the motion.
To amend, yeah, to amend the motion.
I'll second that.
So, there's a motion to amend the main motion to change the rate from three-point-six to two-point-five? Any discussion?
Obviously, trying to look at all sides of this. It does appear arbitrary to say we've had this process that we've used all these years, and then to suddenly determine to change it. We also have an issue of, as addressed, pay equity, which I think does need to be addressed at some point with either a study, something along those lines. We do know that we're going to have to change the system in which we've used, because this is the last year we're going to do it. I don't know if that means then, well, then go ahead and modify it this year, because we know we're going to do something different next year. I do agree with everybody. It does seem high. I don't know anybody that's getting this type of increase. However, I also agree, it seems like it's an arbitrary decision at this point. This is the last year, let's just change it, because we're very concerned about where it's going to lead in the future, so.
If I remember correctly, at the committee, at the Budget Committee meeting, we had this discussion, and it was decided that they would take the discussion about the cost of living adjustment, whether it should be three-point-six percent or two percent, back to the Council, and that's what we're doing right now.
And I really appreciate that we can talk this through, ladies.
So, any further discussion? So, roll call, fellas.
This is on a motion to amend.
Amend.
Counselor Silvernagle?
No.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Belz?
Yes.
Counselor Sharmer?
Yes.
So, that motion passes, so it's amended to two-point-five percent COLA?
And now you need a motion on the amended resolution? You said you need to vote on the amended resolution?
Correct.
Yes.
Correct. So, is there any further discussion? No, that made motion has been amended? Roll call, please, fellas.
Counselor Sharmer?
Yes.
Counselor Belz?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Yes.
And that motion passes?
And thank you, Frank, for your comments, and I do believe that this is something really critical that we need to be discussing. Women in Monmouth should not be making less than men for the same work. And I know, I know there's all this stuff about the pay ranges and everything, but the numbers don't lie. I tried to make this a million different ways, and women still ended up making less than men.
Well, there's a significant amount of research now about unintended bias, which is where this comes from. And so, it's a deeper issue than just saying, men make more than women. There's a tremendous amount of research done on this, and that's why I'd like to see more study-
A discussion.
A discussion on this. Maybe we're wrong, but I'd like to know, I'd like to have some facts-
Right, me, too.
If we're addressed with that.
So, moving on to Item Number Seven, adopting a resolution, re-adopting the amended city investment policy.
So, you have before you a staff report. As noted in the staff report, the bulk of the changes that have been incorporated into the investment policy are administrative in nature. There's a little bit of cleanup of, to modernize the language, relative to other jurisdictions, existing standards, including Oregon rabbi statutes, has some different nomenclature and some different code references that needed updating. There is, there is no change to the actual policy itself. As you know, we currently have the bulk of our, the city's investments in the local government investment pool. This policy allows us to do something more than that, if we have sufficient reserves to do something, and rates indicate that that would be a prudent thing to do. Right now, we're getting over two percent in the local government investment pool, which for essentially liquid funds is very, very competitive. So, it's hard to, it's hard to- So it's hard to, it's hard to argue against it. And I will, the one thing that may sort of stand out to you is that the number was updated from, the amount available to invest from up to 8 million is now actually up to 17 million because, and again, that's, that hasn't changed in one year, that we suddenly have an extra 9 million. That is simply, it's a, it's a different school of thought on how much is available to invest, because ours, we have roughly between 15 and 17 million in the local government investment pool, that is an investment. So that's, that's why I categorize it that way, to give a better understanding of where our portfolio is. And I welcome questions on the investment policy, if you have any.
And this would be Resolution 1865.
Roxanne?
I just want to make sure I'm reading this correctly. Everything in red in our document is basically track changes. Those are correct. Because I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a good point. And I should emphasize as well, we do need to look at this annually. That is a requirement under ORS.
Alexa, in this, this 17 million you're talking about, that's a fluctuated thing, though.
Absolutely.
Because it could be more at the first, less at the... I mean, it's, it's your investment of extra money to when we spend it at the end.
Right. When we have property taxes in hand in November, it goes up a little. When we are spending summer, on summer capital projects, it goes down. So it does range.
And sort of have a motion on this?
This is 1865.
65.
It's what?
1865.
You can just do it by reading the, reading the title of the resolution.
Basically, it was this.
Yeah.
You can say I move instead of the staff recommends.
All right. I move that the Monmouth City Council, Council approved Resolution...
1865.
1865, which adopts the City of Monmouth investment policy as modified.
Second. So that's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Phil.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Yes.
Counselor Belts?
Yes.
Counselor Scherner?
Yes.
And that resolution passes. And now we're going to move on to item eight, adopt a resolution, re-adopting the amended city fiscal policy. And that would be Resolution 1866.
Okay. So this one, I do have some more substantive changes that I'd like to recommend. Again, we haven't done a comprehensive update of the fiscal policy in probably about three years. And so I've, I've added just a little bit of additional structure to it, to give more of an understanding of why we have a fiscal policy. And so, a lot of this language is, it was in the original policy, but I've just organized it a little more so that hopefully we can see what the purpose is, what the scope is of the policy, and, and also to emphasize the role that council plays in establishing a fiscal policy. Again, this is kind of a best practice document format that the auditors really appreciate. And so, that's where, you know, that is more of an administrative level change at the beginning of the document. But as we move through, there was also a little bit of updating, again, of some outdated code references. And then, of course, with our advancement into the 21st century, we are now using credit cards to purchase things as, as we have for some time, but that language really needed to be incorporated. It has been since the last policy update, so I thought that that was appropriate to have in there, and as well, addressing the fact that we do issue payroll checks as well, and that as an internal control is something audit focuses on. So those are the substantive changes around payment methods and processes. And then, I did add in our bond post issuance compliance policy, which also came to pass subsequent to the last fiscal policy update, just as a reference point, because that is something that is promulgated by MDAC, Municipal Debt Advisory Commission. And they, they are really pushing for post compliance, post issuance compliance and having those procedures. And those procedures were put in place by my predecessor, but again, just calling them out so that council is aware, as, as part of your fiscal policy, that we are complying with debt issuance post compliance. And then, the other substantive item that I wanted to add was a section on risk management. You know, we have a very strong risk management program with support from our insurance institution, CIS, City County Insurance Services. However, I think it would behoove us to provide you with an annual report to let you know how we're doing relative with our insurance claims, so that you are aware that our safety program is working. And so I hope that that is something that, that you will appreciate. I haven't actually established a timeline, only that it's annual, so I hope you'll give me a little bit of time to develop the first one. But I've kind of laid out here, and so I welcome any comments you have. If you decide to go ahead and adopt the policy as it's written this time, that will give you some time to potentially review it. And I will, because I have added some substantive language, I will bring it back again next year. We don't have to look at this one annually, but I, I feel the fiscal policy does have, there are some advantages to looking at it every year if you're inclined to do so. So I will likely bring it back again next year, and then if there are not substantive changes, we can talk about what a, a review timeline is that makes sense, so that you're not taking too much of your time. I did add in a significant number of definitions, which are ones that I would actually like to see in the budget document at some point, but again, they're all related. I know there were quite a few questions from, from budget committee members to me about some of the nomenclature that we use in the budget and, and in the financial statements as well. And so this is just, hopefully, a handy reference, because it's in your policy, you'll know where to look for it. And then I will hopefully also add it into the budget document next year. So any questions that you have, I would welcome.
I'd like to risk management, and I would like to see the breakdown of when, you know, when you have the media series and stuff like that, so that it's in, it's in a program, you know, a format, and safety too. And I think that's good policy, so then we know that, that we're actually addressing some of these problems that sometimes we don't hear about till afterwards. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I recommend that the Monmouth City Council approved Resolution 1866, which adopts the City of Monmouth fiscal policy as modified.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Phil.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Aye.
Counselor Scherner?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Belts?
Yes.
And item nine is the second reading and adopting of the transient lodging tax ordinance. And so, this is an ordinance amending certain provisions of the Monmouth City Code relating to transient lodging tax, and I declare it to pass as second reading. And any discussion on this ordinance?
What does this ordinance require? Yeah, it's supposed to be a number of certain...
Ordinance is 1381.
You may remember, Mr. Merritt, you may remember, this is, 90% of this is to update, to coordinate with state law changes in February, to refresh some older provisions of our code, and to adjust the collection period to match with what is evolved as practice. Nothing, nothing controversial about it.
And then, didn't this update language to...
Intermediaries?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was part of state law changes. The state law changes capture better intermediaries.
Okay. So is there a motion on this?
So I move the second reading and adoption of ordinance 1381, amending certain provisions of the Monmouth City Code relating to transient lodging tax.
We have a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Phil.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Scherner?
Yes.
Counselor Belts?
Yes.
And that passes. And now we're on to council comments. Any comments, any councils would like to make?
I want to say, I've been on the, been on the council for nine years, this is before me. This had to be one of the most in-depth budget sessions I've been, and I was very enjoying that. People brought out a lot of things, and I want to thank all those people in the community that come and put forth and actually asked questions to figure out what was going on at the budget. I think more people walked away from that understanding more than any time before. I mean, I know it was long and drawn out, but a lot of questions were asked, and I thought that was very, very important. Thank all of the people that put their time in. That includes the city staff, too.
Hearing no comments. Do I have a motion to adjourn? And before we do that, we'll be going right into our urban renewal agency meeting, and we'll stay here at the DIAS to finish that, and then after that, we'll go into our work session. And we'll proceed to the...
Make the motion.
So, you have a motion to adjourn? It's been moved and seconded to adjourn on paper.
Aye.
So I'd like to call to order the Monmouth Urban Renewal Agency meeting for Tuesday, June, Tuesday. It's June...
Yeah, it says 13. Right, sorry. We originally were...
Okay. So now we're all back on...
Yes.
On the right calendar day. And so, we're all still here, so I'm going to forego the roll call. Are there any citizen comments at this time for the renewal agency meeting? This time is reserved for citizens to comment.
Pass this first. No, wait, pass this first. Seven minutes. Okay, August first.
Well, that's the, I'm just following our agenda.
Okay.
Now, this time is reserved for citizens to comment on items that are not on the agenda. Maximum of three minutes per item, please. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. And on this, we've got the urban renewal agency meeting, minutes from August the 1st of 2017. Do I have a motion on that?
I make a motion, I'll make a motion to accept the regular session minutes from August 1st, 2017.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, seeing five, I say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that passes. And now we're moving on to the business agenda, and I'm going to open the public hearing for the 2018-19 budget. Anyone like to speak on that? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and move on to item two, which is adoption of the 2018-19 budgets.
Thank you again, just for your council members, or actually board members of the Urban Renewal Agency. You have before you a budget totaling $751,174 in appropriations. The, it is fairly self-explanatory in the resolution, and I've laid out the, the, so if you have any questions, I'd welcome them.
And this would be Resolution 31.
31?
Yes. And so, any questions? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion?
I move approval of Resolution 31, a resolution adopting the budget for appropriations and a declaration of tax increment for 2019-19 fiscal year.
Second.
This is for the Urban Renewal Agency.
And it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Phil.
Mrs. Belts?
Yes.
Mr. Milligan?
Yes.
Mr. Silvernagle?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Dr. Scherner?
Yes.
And that motion passes.
Wait, can I just go back? Just noticed one thing on the minutes, just a little thing, Phil, I'm not Mr. Scherner. I'm not...
Auto-correct.
I'm not, I barely have money to be Mr. Scherner.
All right. I'll fix that. And Dr. Scherner.
And there was a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, seeing five, I say aye.
Aye.